Just as a reminder, the evening forum is being recorded by the League of Women Voters for later broadcast. Recordings of this event may not be used without the express written approval of the League. The League will only allow audio/video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety, except by the media reporting on the event. We will not accept audience questions tonight while the candidates are onstage. Questions for the candidates were collected online anonymously at our website and reviewed by our experienced League of Women Voters team. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to make an opening comment and 60 seconds to respond to each question asked. Candidates will then, at the end of the forum, have 60 seconds to make their closing statement. Please join me in welcoming the Goody County Commissioner candidates, Linda Flanders, Les Anderson, Paul Drodos, and Ed Moritz. I ask that you would hold your applause as we ask questions, so that we give all of the candidates equal amount of time and equal opportunity to be heard. So we'll applaud them at the end of the forum. Please hold your applause during the questions. Again, thank you for participating tonight. We'll start with opening remarks, and we will start in this order: Linda, then Les, Paul, and then Ed. So Linda, your opening remarks.
Well, good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you to the League and to Prairie Island Indian Community and to Red Wing Chamber of Commerce for being willing to put this on tonight. I was very honored last November that I was elected to take over for Commissioner Ron Allen. And I worked the first few months diligently, meeting with department heads, learning as quickly as I possibly could about all the different interactions of county government and how those different pieces fit together. And now I'm asking for your vote for my own for-year term. So I come from very, very deep roots in this community. I have a background in law enforcement, so I was a first responder. And first responders, we deal in crisis. And right now, crisis management is a skill that would be very, very valuable to have. I have various...I have top priorities for our community: the economy, absolutely; housing; the ability to increase our...oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't see the card.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Les?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Les Anderson from Welch, a lifelong resident of Goody County. I farm in the Welch area with my wife Jeannie, have 30 years. We have three daughters, two granddaughters. I went to school in the one-room school down in Welch, graduated in '79 from Central High School up the block here. I went to college. My dad died when I was 19. I went home to farm and have been there ever since. Along the way, I've gotten served on quite a few different boards. I'm currently on the Merchant's Bank Advisory Board and the Minnesota Corn Growers Board, which I'm president of right now. Minnesota Corn Growers has been a great experience. I've gotten to spend quite a bit of time in DC. I get out there about five or six times a year, working on different foreign policies. So that's been a neat experience, getting to meet a lot of the different legislators out there and the agency people. I guess some of the things I'm concerned about are making sure we have a good business climate here, public safety, roads and bridges, broadband, of course. We got pretty bad internet in some of these areas, and of course, farming is always going to be a big part of my agenda, so...thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Drodos, and I am the county commissioner from District 5, which means if you take this road up to West Avenue and travel out toward Twin Bluff Road and then go all the way to Wacuta, that's my district. I want to thank our sponsors tonight for giving us the opportunity to share the future of Goody County, because that's what this is about. As the current board chair, I start every meeting asking for a moment of silence for those that have been affected or passed from COVID-19, which is now nine people in Goody County, and also to thank and encourage all the people that have stepped up to try and stop the pandemic. It is affecting our lives, it is affecting our county, and I think it just says a lot about who we are, that we can deal with this, and that we can actually overcome this eventually. My career basically started...I've had about 40 years' experience volunteering, and I think I've found that volunteers are very good at always working together and having a good outcome. Speaking of outcomes, I think my achievements at the county board, we have the lowest levy increase in all of Southeast Minnesota last year, and we're going to continue that this year while maintaining the best human health and human services programs anywhere in the state of Minnesota. The things that I care about the most are sustaining the environment, our rich natural environment, and maximizing the value of tax dollars, and finally, to make sure everybody is welcome, respected, and can live in healthy and safe communities, which we have here.
The county...oh, thank you. Thank you. Ed?
Hello. Thank you for coming out here tonight to listen to all of us speak on our platforms and the outcomes we see for Goody County. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters. They do great work and a big fan. And I live here in Red Wing with my fiancee and our two daughters and son. And 2020 has brought me to run for my first office I've ever ran for. You know, this is unprecedented, and I believe that, you know, some things could have been handled better. We are in this county, in the state, you know, tax too high, and we need to figure something about that. And, you know, as we learned in 2020, that we need to strengthen our private property rights, you know, especially in this state with the government intrusion and them being allowed to, of course, do whatever they feel is necessary for public health. And this goes for...and this goes to saying, you know, we need to have good ideas and...excuse me, a better way forward for the future. And this is why I'm running for county commission.
Thank you. We'll move to the first question, and the order for answering will be Paul, then Ed, Les, and then Linda. So the first question is, what do you believe is...and by the way, please ask me to repeat the question, I'm going to read it once, and if you need it repeated, feel free to ask me. First question, what do you believe is the biggest challenge facing Goody County, and how will you approach it if elected? Paul?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I think COVID-19 and recovering is going to be a very serious problem. Today, the Association of Minnesota Counties had their meeting in the cities. It was, of course, virtual, and everyone is talking, the legislators, as well as all the counties are talking about what happens next. The CARES money will eventually run out, and even though unemployment is improving, we need to actually...we need to face this crisis for what it is. It's a recession, and I guess my thought is that these may not be the best of times, but we cannot allow them to be the worst of times. So we need to apply ourselves, and I think generally, people are optimistic in Minnesota, and we will succeed if we take that optimism and apply it to our communities and build education systems, means of communication, which we talked about, and also looking forward to a prosperous future. That's all we can ever do or expect from our government, is to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed? Would you repeat the question? What do you believe are the biggest challenges facing Goody County, and how would you approach it if elected?
Well, of course, there's a few things. The, you know, lowering our taxes and just basically opening up our county and state government would do a remarkable job in bringing this economy and bringing in more small businesses. The COVID crisis has killed a lot of small businesses, which is unfortunate for a small town that lives and breathes small business to support the systems we have in place. And just working together and coming, you know, coming together as a community and working together and just listening to each other and figuring out what we need to move forward.
Thank you. Les?
Of course, COVID is a pretty big deal, especially short-term, hopefully. Hopefully, it's not a long-term thing. But I think longer-term, I think just growing that business base, industry base, we need those tax dollars coming in, we need all the jobs to help, you know, pay for housing and keep the economy going, so that would be my big issue, so thanks.
Thank you. Linda?
I do believe that there are four things that are interconnected, that are so interconnected that they create a major complex issue. One, of course, is the economy and getting businesses to come here. Two is housing. Housing study was done in Goody County. We need 2,208 new housing units within the next 10 years to fill the gap of the growing population. And if our employers don't have places for people to live, then we're not going to necessarily be able to encourage people to come here. I think COVID-19 obviously is creating so many problems, but the mental and physical health of our people, of ourselves, I mean, it's really taking a toll. And on top of that, broadband, because if we're going to be staying at home, distance learning, telemedicine, learning from school at home, we've got to have high-speed internet. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question, we will start with Les, and then Linda, Ed, and then Paul. The second question is, what do you think is the biggest consequence of COVID-19 pandemic in Goody County, and how do you propose to address it? Les?
Well, thanks for the simple question there. But a half hour ago, I just found out my brother has COVID, so it sort of hit home right now. You know, I don't know, I think we just got to work through this thing. It's just gonna...until they get a vaccine, it's going to run its course, I guess. We just have to social distance as much as possible, do all that sort of stuff. But I mean, it is crippling our economy. We have to get this stuff going again. We can't all be hiding all the time from it, but I think we got to make sure we, you know, take care of the elderly and the people at risk and that sort of thing, but we just have to get through it, I think, so...
Thank you. Linda?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What do you think is the biggest consequence of COVID-19 pandemic in Goody County, and how will you address it?
Well, yes, it is wreaking havoc on the economy. I am well aware of that, and I went through that experience in 2008, so I know the fear and the anger and the frustration that comes with it. I personally would believe that the long-range unintended consequences of what we are in right now is going to be mental health. Whether it's the isolation, the anger, the rage, the fear of what's going to happen, all of those have so much to do with how we act, how we think about others and about ourselves, and I think that if we can improve our own physical health, just one step at a time, and know that we need to focus on our mental health, that that will make a huge difference going forward.
Thank you. Ed?
One more time, would you repeat that?
What do you think are the biggest consequences of the COVID-19 pandemic in Goody County, and what will you do to address it?
One of the biggest consequences, it's now six months, six, seven months since we initially shut down our state. And what's going to hinder us in the future is still using it as an excuse, because if we would have been smart in the first place and, like Linda referred to, is protecting the elderly, and if we would have done that and protect the ones that it would have, that it infected, we wouldn't have the, you know, the numbers that we do, which, you know, are smaller than what they projected. But, you know, the other consequences is when politicians have a crisis, you know, they never let it go, and they fit it to their narrative, and we continue to be under a, you know, well, COVID this, COVID that. Well, we need to move on, open up this county, because if we don't, it's going to wreak havoc on the future, and we have things we need to move forward with.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. I serve on the State's State Community Health Services Advisory Committee with the Health Commissioner Jan Malcolm. I'm very well-versed in the science of epidemiology. Everybody on that board pays attention to pandemics and their danger. I agree with some of the candidates, but I feel the long-term worst consequence is the education of our students. And I started working almost recently about fortifying tutoring, especially the kids...we've dealt with it in the county because of the truancy of students that did not sign up from off-site or did not pay attention to off-site learning, and then subsequently became at least three months behind in their schooling, and now we're seeing an increase in that timeframe. Education for students is one thing we can't get back. We can get back money, we can get that treasure, but we can't get back education and opportunities. And I fear for the disadvantaged students that may not be able to recover from this, so I think trying to bolster our education system and perhaps make changes in that system are the most important outcome that we can do to strengthen the response.
Thank you, Paul. The third question, we will ask Ed, and then Paul, Linda, and then Les. The third question is, has the state bonding from the legislature affected Goody County projects? If so, how will the needed infrastructure projects move forward without more state action?
Well, bonding bill is one of the main things that there's been failed leadership out of St. Paul, and it comes to communities such as ours. You know, the stalemate that we have and not getting anything done for our community. You know, some use COVID as an excuse, others use, you know, the both sides not getting along. Well, the rest of the state and St. Paul can, you know, have their issues, but here, we need results, and if we're not getting infrastructure projects done, you know, that's a problem for us, you know, that's jobs, that's, you know, housing, that's roads, that's, you know, everything that we need to live.
Thank you. Paul?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Has the state bonding bill from the legislature affected Goody County projects, and how, if so, how will the needed infrastructure projects move forward without more state action, state legislative action?
Well, I think generally speaking, this legislature's been very generous to Goody County, and many of our proposals, and certainly in the city of Red Wing, we've seen a lot of construction and follow-through. My experience on the Great River Rail Commission is one example of the bonding bill failing, because for a $10 million commitment from the state, we could have increased the ridership and trains available to go to Chicago, increasing another whole transportation corridor. The younger generation is in favor of being much more energy-conscious and conservative. So by not passing that bill, now that the umpire bill there is down to three days a week starting in October, we're threatening the entire rail system in our country. The state of Wisconsin is on board with this, and we were hoping that the Minnesota Legislature would include that in the bonding bill. So that's just one example of keeping our depot open and having another way to get or portal to get to Red Wing, how it would actually affect us. And of course, I support bonding for the long-term jobs available and improvements in our infrastructure.
Linda?
Well, sadly, I believe that the short-term answer is that it makes a huge difference. Without the bonding bill from the state, we're not going to be able to move forward with the projects that we have at that county level. And that does make a huge difference for the roads, for the bridges, for fixing the bridges. So the bonding bill is crucial to the counties in Minnesota being able to move forward. Crucial.
Thank you. Les? Has the state bonding bill from the legislature affected Goody County projects? And if so, how will the needed infrastructure projects move forward without more state legislative action?
I'm not familiar with the bill, as the rest of the commissioners do. Of course, that's critical to getting things done in Goody County, but I guess, just from my experience on the corn growers, the sort of holdups we've had in St. Paul on some of our issues like 179 and some other things, it's sort of goes back to some of the, you know, just the general infighting going on at the St. Paul that sort of prevents some of these things from happening, that sort of keeps these projects from going forwards.
Thank you. We'll move on to question number four, and we'll start with Linda, and then Les, and then Ed and Paul. The question is, some Goody County residents are concerned about industrial farming practices. What is your view on the county air-water quality as impacted by farming and other land use?
I believe we all know that without good water, good air, and healthy soil, that farming is not going to have a great future, nor are we. So the soil quality is very, very important. And I know one of the things that we do have is the ability to have crops along...I'm sorry, I can't think of the term now. I'm not a farmer. But perennial-type crops along the river, so that what they do use on the fields do not go into the water. And one of the things that I do know is very interesting, is I believe it's called pernza, and it's a wheat, it's a perennial wheat with very, very deep roots that can help to protect runoff from going into the water.
Thank you. Les?
Well, this is a topic I spend most of my time on, I guess. I guess I would challenge anybody to come out and look at some of the practices nowadays and stuff. We are so heavily regulated, and the amount of conservation efforts we need to use, the amount of monitoring, the amount of reporting we need to do, yet I can guarantee you, these farms are pretty safe, that they do a great job of just managing the manure and everything else that I...like I said...
Thank you. Ed?
I am unfamiliar with, you know, some farming practices, but, you know, basically, you know, clean water, clean air, that's essential to the livelihood of every citizen of this county. And to protect and continue to, you know, Les said they're heavily regulated, but, you know, there's probably a reason for that, because we do not want to end up, you know, in places such as Flint, who their water source has, you know, been contaminated and still working on, but we don't need to ever get that far, you know, withholding each farmer and individual that works with that, you know, responsible. I think we should be in good stead.
Thank you. Paul?
In my career with the city, years ago, I was the stormwater pollution expert, and I worked very closely with the Goody County Soil and Water Conservation District for clean water. There are a couple of things that have to be pointed out, is that Goody County pays attention to, has a feedlot manager that pays attention to these issues very carefully, as well as the Soil and Conservation District, their inspectors, and all building permits and all building generally is inspected. I agree with Les as far as the regulations. Goody County has over 90, reaching 98% of the buffer law that was proposed by Governor Dayton is in effect, which is protecting our streams. And I think overall, the farmers are probably doing the best job as far as, well, not always, but most of the time, they understand that the soil is the future and they're protecting it. So I have very good feelings about how the progress we're being made in that department, and Goody County is right on top of it.
Thank you. We'll move on to question number five. Question number five will be answered by Paul, then Ed, Linda, then Les. Question is, is systemic racism affecting county services, and if so, what should be done?
Well, I think that's an excellent question. Commissioner Anderson, at two board meetings ago, made a very impassioned statement concerning racism and our policies in the county, which then set the wheels in progress to actually set up a commission to examine every single policy Goody County has, and I'm planning to participate in that. I think systemic racism is part of our American culture at this point, and the demand that it be changed is something that's very important and something that needs to be done, and now is the time to do it. So I'm hoping that this commission in Goody County will find that the county is trying to be fair, honest, and I said earlier that we need everyone to be respected and welcome here and to participate in our economy and give their best, so we can make it the best place to live. So those are my thoughts, and I plan to work very hard on that issue.
Thank you. Ed?
In the beginning of my life, I spent 12 years in foster care in the state of South Dakota, and even there and here, it's...there is, you know, I've seen it. I've got a...my brother Bobby, who is hitting this head-on in his hometown. Yes, it's, you know, here, but yes, it's an individual, it's who, and what you're taught at home. It's, you know, and then that's what you proceed to the public. And it's unfortunate that if it is hindering the public, you know, we need to hit it head-on and end it, you know, here, you know, fair and square. 2020 is, you know, this year's been unprecedented for many things, and showing, you know, what we need to work on is prevalent, from what happened in the cities to here, which, you know, like I said, it comes down to individuals and what they're taught at home, and, you know, and it brings into the public, and we need to end it now.
Thank you. Linda?
I do believe that there is systemic racism going on across the entire nation. Not that I have heard of it happening within the county government, but it is present. And I have certainly heard of stories from people in our community, of how they've been treated in the community, that I found shocking. I mean, I was very, very shocked to hear that in Red Wing and Goody County, they were treated the way they were. As Commissioner Drodos said, we are moving forward at the county level to have a commission to be able to look at every single one of the policies and see where is there something that is systemic and maybe was created 20, 30 years ago, when we were a completely different community than we are now, and where do we need to change so we can meet the future? And where do we need to change so we can meet the future?
Thank you. Les?
I don't know of any specific examples, but I'm guessing it does exist, just like it does exist in the rest of society. My daughter's engaged to a person of color, so someday I'll have a granddaughter, grandson of color, so hopefully by then we'll have some of these things figured out and be a little better world by then.
Thank you. Next question will ask of Les first, Linda, then Paul and Ed. The next question is, what are some environmental improvements for Goodie County that you will work to make if elected? Environmental improvements in Goodie County?
Well, there's, I'm guessing there's a few septic systems out there that could be upgraded and stuff. It'd be nice if we had some more programs to help with some of those things, you know, maybe some help with some of these wells and stuff too to try to get them up to speed. And of course, you know, there's always some feedlots that could use a lot of attention and stuff. I think those would probably be my main ones.
Thank you. Linda?
Renewable energy is something that I believe very, very strongly in. Just within the last month or so, there were two solar farms down in the Pine Island area that are going to be, that were approved to be able to move forward. And underneath them, they're going to put in pollinating plants. So, I mean, that is, that's one more thing that can compound on a very positive wave when you have solar farms. But renewable energy absolutely, positively is essential, and I truly believe it's the future. We don't have any electric cars yet in Good Hugh County, but I feel very strongly that that is something that we should move forward with, and that would be something that I would support.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. I mentioned earlier that I have an environmentalist background, but one thing I've worked hard on is the erosion on the Mississippi. I believe in an article that was called Bank Robbers, because what's happening is that silt is ending up in the lake, and then we're actually concerned about having the Cannon Bottoms flood, which would be terrible. I've worked, so I've worked with people on trying to improve that situation and create no-wake zones. I've worked on invasive species. You may have heard of Doug the Plug, which is a giant boat plug. You may have seen, is the mascot for removing your boat plug in order to get rid of invasive species. I agree with Linda, since being on the board, every single solar garden has been approved, and I initiated a program to buy at least half of the electricity for Goodie County from solar farms. I agree that electric vehicles are progressing in the county, and we're waiting for a study called Fleet Karma, which will show what the most efficient vehicles and the best use for electric vehicles are.
Thank you. Ed?
I'd just like to reiterate, you know, the electric cars, you know, and solar energy, I believe is, you know, could be the wave of the future, and if that's what it is, you know, fully support it on the county level. And, yeah.
Thank you. Our next question will be to Ed, then Paul, Les, then Linda. The question is, what should the county do to support our immigrant friends and neighbors? Ed?
First of all, we need to, you know, introduce ourselves and welcome to our communities. The people I call my folks, my father, he immigrated from Holland in the 1950s. His experience, just, you know, southwest here, southwest of here was, you know, something that I think should, you know, happen, they were welcoming to the community, they were, you know, helped around to find jobs, you know, but the most part is that they come here for a better life, and, you know, we need to support that. And for instance, you know, going back to systemic racism, you know, if that's here in this county, and which, you know, and it isn't a state, you know, it's not going to help us move forward with that and, you know, welcome them in.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. I think one example I have is the Hispanic Outreach Program that's helping to integrate immigrant families into our community. I've worked with Lucy and that group through the Duff Endowment, and I'm just thoroughly amazed how thorough this integration has been. But again, they're starting with education and tutoring programs and math and science and bringing those Hispanic people participating in Hispanic Outreach to a level to be fully participating in our society, which I think is a great thing. It's a good model for how we need to address some of the weaknesses throughout our society through education, through opportunity, and certainly for sharing their culture and making that a part of our culture will also make great improvements. And I think I support refugees in this community thoroughly.
Thank you. Les?
I think probably the biggest thing is to make sure we have enough jobs for them. I've worked with quite a few Hispanics through farming and stuff, and I've always been amazed at their work ethic and the job they do, but I think the biggest thing they need is jobs.
Thank you. Linda?
Well, I would concur with Commissioner Drodo that Lucy Richardson at Hispanic Outreach has done a phenomenal job of helping to integrate new people that come into our community. And I would certainly believe that, want to believe, that the city of Red Wing and Good Hugh County would also make that first step to welcoming people into our community that are from other countries. Being an immigrant, you leave something that you're used to, and you go someplace where you don't know hardly anything, probably don't even speak the same language, but you've got hope, you've got faith that you are going to have a better life because of where you're going. And if we really want to enrich Good Hugh County, then I think we all need to reach out our arms and welcome people who come here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question will be first to Linda, then Les, Ed, then Paul. And the question is, what is the role of county public health in Goodie County? How will you, as a commissioner, work to support the local public health? Linda?
Well, public health at the moment is absolutely the number-one department in the county and probably in the state and in the nation as well. Public health is incredible, and we do, in Good Hugh County, have an excellent public health department. It's accredited, it just got its accreditation, and it's, that's a national accreditation. There are not that many public health departments that have that. The public health department follows the science, which I believe is extremely important. We are, I am the chair, all of us commissioners are on the Health and Human Services Committee. I was just elected the chair for that committee, and believe very strongly in the need to support it and what they need to do to keep all of us healthy, fed, and moving forward in creating a much better community than we've seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Les?
Well, I'm no expert on the subject, but after looking at the county a little bit, you soon figure out that public health is a huge part of the budget. Provides a very essential service, and like any program, it has to be managed and managed effectively. But I don't have any other real comments on that.
Thank you. Ed?
The, you know, here in Minnesota, we have one of the best healthcare systems, and that goes from the state and top on down, and we need to continue to support that. And like, it's not my forte is health, but, you know, healthy communities is what we need to stand on, especially in the crisis we're dealing with.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. I preceded Linda as the Chair of the Health and Human Services Commission, and I can say that Goodie County is very deeply involved in public health and always has been. During the pandemic, we have used our emergency response people as part of our health program, and the information that they provide is a much broader and bigger scale look at the situation, which is very effective. I think throughout this crisis, I just, the science of public health, I think if you look at it, started in 1880 when Louis Pasteur phoned out about bacterial contagions. I don't want to go there, but the point is that people have been studying this over well over 100 years, 140 years now, and I think we have a pretty good idea of how disease spreads and how it can be stopped. And I think that Goodie County is on top of that, and we have contact tracing, people that are doing that, and we're following the normal protocols of any epidemic to the letter of the law in Goodie County, and I'm very proud of the people that are participating and the response that we're getting.
Thank you. We're going to change this up just a little bit, and we're going to ask two final questions. It'll just be a lightning round, so I'd ask you to just keep your comment brief to one word or one sentence. And the first question is, and this will be the order, Ed, Linda, Les, then Paul. And the question is, what's the number-one county infrastructure project, in your opinion? Number-one county infrastructure project. Ed?
Providing more homes and roads for the growing city.
Thank you. Linda, your number-one infrastructure project?
Mine would be absolutely housing.
Thank you. Les?
I'd have to agree on the housing end.
And Paul?
I agree with those. I also think safety on Highway 52 is one of our biggest projects.
Thank you. And the final question in the lightning round, given the pandemic and the precautions required by the governor, will you be door-knocking this year? Yes or no? Paul?
Unfortunately, no.
Ed?
Yes, with precautions.
Linda?
No.
And Les?
No.
Thank you. We're going to move to our closing comments, and you have a minute to make whatever closing comments you want, and we'll start with Linda, go to Les, Ed, and then Paul. Linda, your closing comment?
I do believe history has its eyes on us, and that generations from now, people are going to look back on 2020 and reflect on how well we made it through this year. Are we going to work together to be able to do the best we possibly can with the situation we're given? Or are we going to start turning on one another and become much more divisive and possibly violent? County commissioner is a nonpartisan position, and that means the goal is to do what's best for all the people in Good Hugh County. That's certainly my goal. And my priorities are the economy and housing, mental and physical health, and certainly the internet to bring us forward. I thank you all for coming out tonight. I am asking for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you. Les, your closing remarks?
Thanks to the League Women Voters, Prairie Island Community, and the Chamber for doing this tonight. It's nice meeting you, it's nice meeting Linda, very nice lady, she does a fine job, I'm sure as commissioner. But I guess a couple of things I might bring to the table though are just my lifelong experience and institutional knowledge of living here all my life. Serving on the various boards I've been on, I added them up the other day, and they added up to about 70 years. And the other thing might be the relationships and connections I got out in DC and up at the state through corn growers, working with various representatives, senators. Anyways, I got into this, I guess I just, having grandkids sort of changes the way you look at things, and I guess I'd like to try to make sure Goodie County stays a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed? Your closing remarks?
I want to thank you for being out here. You know, this election, you know, comes down to, you know, the public health and safety and basically the freedoms that we have here and, you know, at the county level and on up. And, you know, if you like, you know, high taxes, you know, I'm not the one to vote for unless you like low taxes, you know, coming together, bringing people together, and making this a, you know, continuing to make this a better county for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, your final remarks?
Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming and listening. I think one of the things I've learned as the board chair, that county commissions, county commissions, all county commissions are about consensus. When you boil it down to what actually happens at a county board, almost 95% of the issues are agreed to because they make sense for the long run, they make sense for the people involved, and most people really aren't that interested in roads and building of bridges and land use. But what we've done in Good Hugh County is we've used all those services and all that consensus to move forward. So the job of a commissioner, the most important job, is to get along and to come at the end of the day to form a consensus with at least three votes that says that this is the direction the county should be going in, and most of the time, it's pretty easy. What the county commissioners do, well, they actually have to read a lot and think about, and I think we think about you. We want to hear from you, we want to understand what your needs are and what your problems are. That's our number-one job, and I'm very concerned to hear from people. I try and help as much as I can. And again, I would ask for your vote on November 3rd, and thank you.
And thank you to all of the candidates for being here tonight and for their comments. We appreciate your participation in the League Women Voters Forum, and I would invite Tuna Langton, the president of the local League Women Voters, back on the stage for some final comments.
Thank you very much, Gary, for a wonderful forum. You did a great job. Thank you to all the candidates for participating tonight, and thank you to our co-sponsors, the Red Wing Chamber of Commerce and the Prairie Island Indian Community. We appreciate that. And a big thank you to you, the voters, that came out tonight, and we appreciate your interest in the races and being a participatory, or participating in the evening. Thank you. And I did want to just say to the people that helped put this together tonight, could you please stand because this has been an amazing evening, and I want everyone to understand how many people it takes to put something like this together. And a special thank you to Tom Fien for doing the video tonight, and to Mike Murphy for doing our stand. We hope to see you all next Tuesday night and Thursday night to hear from the rest of the candidates in our local races. Be sure to submit your questions on our webpage. Don't forget to look at vote411.org after the 18th for information on your local ballot and candidate positions. Thank you for coming, and don't forget to vote.